Okay, at this time I'd like, quit laughing, me hosting one. Call the meeting of the Talmage City School Board to order, Kurt, are we?
We're good.
We're good? You sure? Okay, good. At this time, if I can ask everyone to stand for the pledge, and there's a flag back here. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And, of course, it's not the colonial flag, it's the one on the desk that has all 50 states. Jeff, please call, please call the roll.
Mr. Ferrer.
Here.
Mr. Tywone.
Here.
Mississippi. Ms. Justice Carter.
Here.
Mr. Keller.
Here. And I know that Mississippi was, wasn't able to be here tonight, she let us know ahead of time, and I'm actually, next month, just as an FYI, I'm probably not as well, so, so I want to y'all. So, alright, thanks Jeff. At this time, I'd like to welcome visitors, usually we do public comment at the end, but I'm gonna welcome that early, just so that you don't have to, because I see we got a couple folks here, and I don't know if there's anyone else that's here to address the board publicly, but I'm gonna invite that now, usually what we do is we have you stand, you know, say who you are, where you're from, and then usually try and contain it to about three minutes, but, you know, we're not, we don't have overtime penalties necessarily. Well, maybe we will tonight, I don't know, we'll see. But, yeah, so, at this time, it's open up, so I'll recognize.
Am I up?
I think so, sir.
That was quick.
Yeah.
Where do you want me, anywhere in particular?
You know, if, I'm thinking for, because I know we're live streaming, if you're just, like, right there is probably good.
I can do this?
Yeah, that's, that's pretty good, thank you.
I'm Carl Silwosinski, this is my wife Ellen, we work for an organization called ASSE, which stands for American Swedish Student Exchanges, and originally started out just with Sweden and the Scandinavian countries, but has since expanded to most of the world. And what we do is, we work with the agency to bring international students to America, place them in homes, and we deal with the family schools and the organization. We have some unique qualifications for this, well, well, let me backtrack a little. Ellen is an art instructor at a place in Laurel Lake Retirement Community in Hudson. I teach history at Lakeland Community College. I've also taught at Akron, Kent State, and Mount Union. We have some unique qualifications for this job, we've both traveled extensively around the world. Ellen first went to his country called the Soviet Union, when she was still in high school, I can't find it on the map anymore.
Right.
I studied in France, I was an international student myself, went to Ohio University for my bachelor's degree in French, I later switched to history, I found out I'm better at it. After, after college, I found myself in Navy Officer Candidate School, and then spent most of the next, more than half of the next few years overseas, in one form or another. And I went to France several times myself, on research trips for my doctoral dissertation from University of Toledo. Most recently, we both lived in Korea, I taught at a Korean university for six years, fantastic time, we love it when we come across Korean students. So, we're very uniquely qualified for this, we're very familiar with what students deal with coming to a new country. We'd experience, everything they, anything they can experience has happened to us in one form or another. So, not to go too much in it, is we all appreciate the value and benefits, contributions that having international students brings to a school, that's pretty obvious, but, there's a few other aspects of this I'd like to emphasize. A big part of our program are scholarships offered by the State Department, there's a number of unique ones, for example, they're all very similar, but they're directed at different parts of the world. For example, there's one called Future Leaders Exchange, FLEX, which recruits students solely from the former Soviet republics. It was a means of reaching out and helping build more democratic, open societies in what had once been a Soviet dictatorship. Another one was created for Germany, when they reunified, some 30 years ago now. CBYX, which stands for Congress Bundesstab Youth Exchange, and it brings students from Germany, and sends American students to Germany. One we've learned a little more about recently, it's called Youth Exchange and Study, it's the most recent on this list, established only in 2001 by Senators Kennedy and Lugar, strictly recruiting students from predominantly Islamic countries. The point I want to emphasize here is that these scholarship programs and bringing students here is part of American national policy. These students are outstanding in so many ways, they have a very competitive application program, there are several levels of application they have to go through before they're awarded a scholarship, and unfortunately, many of them, there are cases where they end up not being able to come to America for difficulties of finding families and placing them in schools. Our organization is endowed by the State Department, we are required annually to pass a qualification on State Department policies, how to deal with typical problems that may arise, and one of our duties is making sure that all parties involved are following State Department protocols on this. So, aside from caring for the students themselves, we feel, it's a very important part of this job, is that we are not just supporting American policy, we're actually enacting it. This comes under the State Department's, Department Bureau of Educational and Cultural Affairs, so we are actually acting, all of us involved in this are almost acting as agents of the State Department, supporting American policy, and as such, I thank you for the opportunity to say this, and I ask that you would consider placing any of our students in your school.
Okay, great.
That's all.
Thank you, Carl, appreciate it. Yeah, stuff, cool, thanks. You guys are welcome to hang out and listen to the meeting, a lot of it's legal stuff, and you're also welcome to leave if you want, like, but, and if you hang out a little bit and you leave in the middle of it, we're not offended, so, that's what we're trying to say again, from since we're in our room. Stuff, and anyone else want to address?
Yep.
So, maybe do, yeah, go to the same part, if you don't mind, thanks.
Good evening, my name is Brad Bender, I have two sons, one in middle school, one in high school, and I'd like to say thank you for taking the time to listen to my wife and my concern, it's been a year, such, and uncertainly has allowed my family a time to reflect, learn, and grow in many areas. While we certainly are far from perfect, we want to be part of the solution when we see problems. To improve, we know uncomfortable conversations are part of the learning and growing experience. We are also educators, and we are very passionate about all kids, but especially our own. While we have not moved past the decision to keep kids part-time, we don't want to focus solely on that, rather, lack of communication. We would like to highlight, highlight our experience. My wife and I sent an email to all board members and superintendent on Wednesday, March 10th, at 4:15, outlining our concerns about staying hybrid for the remainder of the year. I am happy to read what was sent, as, as all points in the letter are still valid. However, we realize nothing will change at this point, but staying stagnant should not be an option. We followed up an email on Monday, March 15th, at 8:05 PM, to all board members, wondering if anyone even read our letter and requested a phone call. We thought it would be incredibly unprofessional not to hear anything from anybody, but Mr. Keller replied that same evening at 9:45, offering a call later that week. No phone call ever happened, even though my wife replied with her cellphone number. Another email was sent on March 24th, at 7:20 PM, from us stating it was apparent our concerns were not valued, and not to bother following up, which, at this point, it is evident a follow-up was not going to happen. Two weeks, or 14 days, went by without anyone reaching out, at all. We find it very scary, especially given the content of some of our concerns. Is this the norm? I know, as a teacher, I have 24 hours to respond to a parent, I don't have that option to hit delete and move on. Why was it the choice of so many to neglect and ignore valid concerns regarding Talmage City Schools and our kids? So, let's move forward to the graphic regarding changing the state, the start and end times of the school for the next year. While we have no problem with changing of the times, we have a problem with how we found out. My wife saw the graphic on a neighbor's Facebook page on March 26th, she inquired how or where she got the information, which was on Twitter. While social media is a great way to communicate, it's not the only way. In this day and age, school systems have multiple modes of communication to each and all families, relatively at the same time. We get all calls weekly from the athletic director for dining to donate, but we can't get an all call regarding the change of school times, an email, newsletter. Getting the information out is vital, getting out to multiple modes of communication is also essential. How would an emergency be communicated? Via Twitter? Well, we are on Twitter, and we did not see the information, my wife and I are both educators, and it's all, it is not acceptable to post something just solely on social media and expect all of our families to have the necessary information. We must email, we must newsletter, we must print newsletters to send to those parents who don't have email, pick up the phone, call a family, what, we need the information sent to the community in multiple ways around the same time. What makes one community member more essential, to know ahead of time than any other. Finally, my wife and I are incredibly disappointed with this school year, not the teachers themselves, especially after the new year, we have seen our kids at home more than at school, now even more, with state testing going on. We are anxious about our boys moving forward, socially, emotionally, and even in educational gaps, but there's lack of study habits. My wife and I teach full-time in old buildings, not these beautiful ones that we have here in Talmage, with all the kids, every single day, at every single level. We are in the heart of it, and we can speak from experience. We find some decisions and communication appalling from Talmage, as educators, it's always our primary interest to support our schools, our teachers, our athletics, everything. Talmage must do better.
Any other, any other public comment, I'd invite it now, and we can do it again at the end, I don't know, I'm guessing there's probably no other, unless someone comes in, but I'll reopen it at the end, so at this time, I'd like to close, public comment. Now, I'll see if you have any comments you want to make. Like, the way public comment works here, just so Mr. Bender knows, like, we don't typically, like, we receive the information, we don't usually have a back and forth, so I don't, like, want to exacerbate a feeling of disrespect further by ignoring, like, I was remiss in not calling your wife back, but there was a hospital visit in the middle of that, and again, I don't want to make an excuse, so, but, there's always circumstances, and I, and so I'll own that, and I appreciate your perspectives, and I think we're all hearing it, and, you know, we can always strive to be better at what we do. And Steve, you don't have to comment further.
Yeah, Mr. Bender, I appreciate feedback, I, I hear, I hear you, and I think we've heard that from other folks, and the consistency of our communication, and we need to do a better job, I agree.
Thank you. So, thanks for coming in today. Okay, where are we at? 1.5, so, item 1.5, it's recommended that the Board of Education approves the minutes of the Board of Education meeting of March 17th, 2021. Motion by Mark, seconded by Chris. Any comments, deletions, corrections? I have nothing. Jeff, please call the roll.
Mr. Ferrer.
Aye.
Mr. Tywone.
Aye.
Mr. Justice Carter.
Aye.
Mr. Keller.
Aye. Okay, section two, recommendations of the Board of Education are not at this time. So, section three, recommendations of the treasurer, I'll read those out for you, Jeff.
It's recommended that the Board of Education accepts the financial statement as of March 31st, 2021.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Chris. Do you?
No comments about the reports themselves, I will say that I was planning to identify your forecast tonight, but, the budget bill is weaving its way through the House, the full House was to vote on it today, they kind of included the Cup Patterson Funding Bill, which I'm sure you're aware, we spoke about it many times, in the, in the budget bill. Now, if you remember last year, the House actually passed it and it died in the Senate. Now, the budget bill goes next to the Senate, what they'll do with it, we have yet to find out, so, I'm gonna hold off on the fire forecast until May, hopefully we'll know more about where we're headed with state funding.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other questions? Jeff, please call the roll.
Mr. Ferrer.
Aye.
Mr. Tywone.
Aye.
Ms. Justice Carter.
Aye.
Mr. Keller. Aye. Okay, item 3.2, it's recommended that the Board of Education accepts a $3,100 donation from Talmage Little League for fencing at the new TES TMS athletic field. Motion by Jennifer. Seconded by Chris. Good stuff, eh?
We have a great partnership with our Talmage Little League, and that field's just about ready for.
We need like, a cool name for that place, so, other than TES TMS, but, we'll figure it out, that's good. Jeff, please call the roll.
Ms. Justice Carter.
Aye.
Mr. Tywone.
Aye.
Mr. Ferrer.
Aye.
Mr. Keller.
Aye. Okay, item 3.3, it's recommended that the Board of Education approves the Brad Kroski Memorial Scholarship, in the amount of $1,000 to be awarded to a student pursuing a degree in computer sciences, mathematics, or physics. Motion by Chris, seconded by Mark. Any comment?
Well, just heartbreaking, you know, Mr. Kroski was a friend to all of us, you know, was in Talmage, 1975 hired as a teacher here, it was a pretty remarkable career as a math teacher, physics, I drove by the tennis courts, I thought of Brad today, he was a tennis coach for close to 20 years, and, and then as a director of technology, so, here, and retired, you know, and that wasn't enough, right? A man that well earned a great retirement after, you know, 35 years in the district, or, as you have, 35 years in the district, he ran for school board, you know, that's a tough job, to have him on the school board as well, and his legacy is all around us with, you know, the technology in this building, he thought we would have a bunch of old TVs in this building if it hadn't been for Brad stepping in, the Ohio Facilities Commission to make sure we got the right technology in this building, and, his work, you know, not only on behalf of the teachers, he was an important advocate for our teachers back when, you know, as, as part of teacher negotiations, Brad was an important advocate in the community, did not only get this building built, the technology done, but also, the K8 campus constructed. He's just a great guy, you know, just, everybody loved Brad, and did, you know, gone too soon, he, he and Renee were enjoying a pretty awesome retirement, nobody deserved it more, and it's a shame that it, and I'm glad he did enjoy it as much as he did, it just got cut short, cut short, so, we will miss him dearly, and really very excited to, to announce this scholarship, the families started, and looking for donations and support, so, I'm probably not the only one that wants to say something about Mr. Kroski, I don't think anybody wants to add anything.
I'll add, I mean, I was, I served with him on the board, and, you know, there's, there's always good and bad times in a district, when you're going through different phases, and, and Brad was somebody that helped us see it from all sides, and, not that we had great challenges, but, part of the reason you don't have great challenges is because you have somebody like him, that can bring a perspective born out of being a parent, being a teacher, and being an administrator, that maybe fends off, or stops a lot of difficulties with labor negotiations, or other things like that, from, from emerging, and, he was a hilarious individual, always funny, great sense of humor and wit, and I would also echo when we built this building, Steve, and I know Kurt can attest to that, and I know Brad was sort of a mentor to you when you came in, we would have lunar landing technology, this lunar landing technology in this building, and, and to go to, to Ohio Facilities Commission, and get them to bend on rules and plans and ideas, where you could, hey, I can get more and spend less, believe it or not, in state government, sometimes it's hard to get them to do that, and, and our team was able to do that, led by Brad, and, I was shocked when I heard, and I've talked to several former board members that served with him, and, you know, we're all, you know, Larry Bagnoli, Tom Craig, others that, you know, are just shocked and saddened, and can only appreciate the great work that he did for our kids and our community. So, Jeff, please call the roll.
Mr. Tywone.
Aye.
Mr. Ferrer.
Aye.
Ms. Justice Carter.
Aye.
Mr. Keller.
Aye. Item 3.4, it's recommended that the Board of Education approves the consultant agreement between Total Education Scholars, Total Educational Solutions and Talmage City School District, beginning June 1, 2021, and continuing through June 1st, 2022. Motion by Jennifer, seconded by Mark.
It's a contract services for special needs.
Gotcha.
Is this a real?
Just a yearly thing?
Right. Jeff, please call the roll.
Ms. Justice Carter.
Aye.
Mr. Ferrer.
Aye.
Mr. Tywone.
Aye.
Mr. Keller.
Aye. Okay, motion passed. Section four, recommendation superintendent schools, I don't think we have any.
No.
At this point, right, okay. Section five, motion to take items 5.1 through 5.11 by consent. Motion by Chris, seconded by Jennifer. So, Steve, I'll let you go ahead and make supplemental comments about any of those that you care to call out.
Yeah, absolutely, well, I, Diane.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I, Diane Brumvold Newman is here tonight. And Diane has tendered her resignation. I did share her resignation letter with the board. She's been with the district since 1993 and just has been an awesome, you know, awesome member of our team who we dearly missed at the elementary school. So I asked Diane if she would say a few words.
Sure. Yes, no worries. Oh, yes. Good evening, everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak for a few minutes. It's surreal for me to be standing here today to announce my resignation. It just seemed like yesterday, it was 1993, and my family came to Towneage, and I enrolled my kindergarten and first grader at Dunbar School, and I got my feet wet being a substitute teacher. I only had to do that one semester, and then my master's in reading opened the door for me to become a tutor, two hours a day. Well, the next year, I jumped right in as a full-time tutor. And Esther Aaronson told me I was going to be a reading recovery teacher, and can I go back to school? And I'm like, oh, okay. But little did I know what a blessing that was, what outstanding training that that has given me to become a better reading teacher and teacher, and to use every single day of my career. And I got to do that and implement that. And so I want to say thank you for that training all those years ago. And two years later, when Overdale reopened, Tom Donovan went there, and I became the full-time Title I reading teacher at Dunbar. To this day, I still, that's what I do and that's what I love. So many times I've said, "I've got to be the luckiest teacher in Towneage. I've got to do this with these little kids in small group and build them up." And with the reading recovery, it's a philosophy of, "Tell me what I'm doing right, not what I'm doing wrong. Tell me what I'm doing right." And reinforcing good reading behavior and making the kids feel so special in an environment where they can take a risk and feel good about themselves. So that's what I got to do for all these years and love every minute of it. I love the children. I feel blessed that I knew what my calling was and I got to do this. And I will miss that. I do have a grandchild due the beginning of September, so that's an exciting, it's a very exciting stage in my life coming ahead, and my husband and I, we look forward to building a retirement home, Catawba, up in that area. We spend a lot of time up at Lake Erie. My daughter lives in Avon, so that, exciting things for me in the future. But the memories here, it's part of my life. I have been here as a Towneage City School teacher half of my life. So this is going to be an adjustment for me. It's part of my identity, who I am. It'll always be in my heart. And I just want to thank my, my team of secondary teachers. It's, it's rare for a group of, a team to be together over a decade, 15 years. And we work beautifully together. We're there for each other at school, outside of school, just as you would your own family members, reaching out to each other for everything that you go through in life. And that's how it is, and I'm going to miss those girls. I'm so thankful that I got to spend one year in the brand-new building that we've dreamed about and worked hard to get it this far. And I have three children that, all three of them went through Towneage City Schools. And Bobby, class of '05, Amber, class of '06. We were principal. That was last year. And Zachary, 10 years later, class of 2016. And all of them had an outstanding education year, successful young adults. And I owe that to the wonderful teachers in Towneage. And I want to thank the community of Towneage for all the support through the years, through the building of the high school and, and the current Towneage Elementary School, which is beautiful. So, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to say, for me to stand here and give thanks to all the families I've interacted with, all the children. I hope I helped them become better readers, and I really hope that I've made reading something fun for them and instilled a love of reading for them the rest of their life. So, we've got learning, and it's been fun, and we've shared laughter. And I just want to say how blessed I am. And I, what a great way to leave in retirement feeling like this. My heart is full. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. I hope you have an awesome long retirement. Please come back and visit us. The only other items on personnel is we have three administrator contracts coming up. We're just blessed. It's been a difficult year. These three individuals have done an amazing job. Tim Mosher is our athletic director. Jen Stewart is our high school assistant principal, and Jamie Lynn Hayne is our elementary school assistant principal. So, easy decision to move them forward and renew their contracts. I think everything else on there is pretty straightforward, so I think we've covered it.
Thanks. Any questions or comments, guys? And Gail? Thanks for your service, Diane. Appreciate it.
Very much.
Thank you. Jeff, please call the roll.
Mr. Taiwai.
Aye.
Ms. Justice Carter.
Aye.
Mr. Ferrers.
Aye.
Mr. Kellerman.
Aye. Okay, section six, remarks from the superintendent.
Yeah, I learned my lesson the last time. I know Kirk can probably put it up on the screen up there, but this won't be as, I don't have copies. You guys don't mind passing them down, please? By the way, today's Miss Monica's birthday.
All right. That's why you're hiding over there, hiding the globe. Say happy birthday. Lead us off, Jennifer.
All right, so, you know, tonight, the theme tonight is to provide to the board, this is a draft of our strategic plan. This is the work Mr. Ferguson's been leading since February. And really just proud of the result. I think we've done a good job capturing a lot of stakeholders. So, in the time since we started, as Jeff has spoken to some of our young alumni, he's spoken to students at the high school and the middle school. He's spoken to teachers, the board members, the community members, including the Chamber of Commerce. He's met with athletic parents, arts and music parents, just a wide, wide range of stakeholders throughout the district. And collected a lot of, a lot of good information. A lot of themes emerged. So we basically took those themes and filtered them and condensed them. And, you know, we looked where really what we wanted to do with the strategic plan is come up with a document that said, "In three years, if we do these things, it would have an awesome impact on the job that Towneage City Schools does." And, and we took that, met with the administration team. So a few of us met here in one of the rooms here for about two hours one morning, filtered through it. And really proud of where we ended up with, with the, with the strategic plan. So this is the draft. I think it's important to start first with the goal page. So, kind of focused our energy on six areas. And wanted to make sure we highlighted two things that we do within these six areas. It starts with safety and wellness. There's a little bit of logic to this order here. So, safety and wellness, kids got to be safe, their staff need to be safe as well. The student experience, that's a new term we have in the strategic plan this year. That's really around what type of experience our students are having. Part of that is the start of the school day. What time do they have to get up in the morning? What's their day like? Do they feel included and welcome in the school? Culture, teamwork, and collaboration is all around how we as the staff of Towneage City Schools work together. Teachers, administrators, everyone involved in helping our students. Communication and community engagement, how do we do in communicating with our community and engaging our community in, in helping us lead and run the schools? Curriculum and instruction. So, really what we do, and that's involved of what we do on a daily basis in helping our teachers progress our kids. And then facilities and financial, making sure we're responsible to our stakeholders and taking care of the assets that they have entrusted us with. So, again, we took all those themes and parsed it into these six categories. So, safety and wellness. So I tried on this document to kind of underline some key, what I found was key terms that we're capturing. So, social emotional learning, that's really around kind of, you know, that dimension, new dimension for working with our kids, identifying and working with kids that have social emotional struggles. And likewise, just helping our kids in general navigate life as they mature through the grades. So that will be incorporated as part of our K-12 curriculum. Expanding our emergency management team. Now that we have the new K-8 campus, we coordinating drills and making sure our unification points and we're properly prepared for every type of scenario. So that's, that's an important part of our goals. And then taking our wellness initiative to the next level. We have a wellness initiative now. We work closely with Medical Mutual on ensuring our staff are, maybe physical fitness tests every year. We're going to take this to the next level with both our staff and our students in terms of healthy choices in the lunchroom, exercising, different things to help our, our team be well. That's safety. The student experience, so, again, an emphasis, and that's why Mr. Ferguson did spend a lot of time talking to some of our students that just graduated within the last few years. How did it go? How did we do? What would you do differently? No one has kind of a, you know, closer view of how, how we did. So some key themes that came out of that are around equity, diversity, and inclusion. We want to make sure we do, and do a strong job and include all of our kids. So not only raise awareness amongst our staff, building in cultural literacy into our curriculum, helping some of our students that are minority students, recruiting diverse staff, and expanding our already great programs, which is the Bridges, Bridges to Poverty, which has become much more than that, but expanding that effort not only within the school district, but also engaging community members in that program as well. Increasing career awareness opportunities for our students. So of the three E's, this is the employed version. So making sure we have strong trade school options for our kids. Making sure that we're giving all of our students opportunities. I think this jumped out as an item. We feel like we do a strong job with our kids that are going in colleges. Can we do more for some of our kids that don't have colleges as their goal? Improving and expanding alternative educational options. This really comes out of COVID, life of COVID, and a lot of our families have enjoyed and have worked well with Towneage Online. And that's a big one here, is expanding Towneage Online to make that a more robust platform. And then last but not least, really just looking at our, our student's school day from the time they get up in the morning, when they get on the bus, to the food that they're served in the cafeteria, to how their academy time is used. Are, is their schedule most conducive for having a successful day? So, part of that is the adjustment of the schedule, which will take our students from, our earliest student from being picked up at 6:25 a.m. at the bus stop, now will be picked up at 7 a.m., which helps sleep, helps him sleep more. So, we're excited about just that, that emphasis on how we're helping our students through each school day. Culture, teamwork, and collaboration. And this is really around how we work internally with one another and the, and the team approach. So, improving our ability to collect and get our staff involved and create leadership opportunities for our staff. We also want to improve our evaluation process and professional development opportunities for our classified staff, our aides, our maintenance team, our custodians, our bus drivers, our nutrition services team. We want to look at our district professional development philosophy. Right now, we, we think there's a big opportunity to do more professional development with our staff. We limit, we really limit the number of days that our staff are, are available for professional development. So we're looking at other districts, how they're doing that. And really looking at creating a curriculum model for our, all of our teachers, especially around professional development. And then lastly, and it's, we have to do it, but it's, but we also want to be really smart and thoughtful as we implement OTEZ 2.0, which is the new teacher evaluation tool. Communication and community engagement. We heard a lot of things from folks similar to Mr. Bender's concern that he shared tonight about creating a more consistent communications experience for our K-12 families. And that's something we, we know we want to do and will do by improving our website, defining our social media presence, and defining our direct communications methods like email and other means to communicate with our families and our community. Area five, curriculum and instruction. So, this is, you know, a highlighted area that our staff brought to us during this process. Especially as, here in Towneage, we've had a lot of new staff, more and more new staff, younger staff, looking for more guidance as they, they join us and move through their careers. So we endeavor to create a uniform K-12 curriculum platform. So this will be a lot of work and the focus of a few people during, during the next few years. But what this will do will really define for all of our staff, you know, when we're delivering, what content, and how we're delivering that content to our students and helping our families, and really creating a Towneage way around how we deliver curriculum on a daily basis. We've had a tremendous amount of success with our multi, with our MTSS framework, which is really, you know, a great program that's working in identifying kids at our elementary school now. We want to expand that across all of K-12. So, something that's been a great success for us at the elementary school, and we'll expand it beyond into, into the higher grades. And then lastly, do a better job and more intentful job in using data and using educational data to drive student outcomes. And then, last page, facilities and financial. We still have, accomplished so much. And I think the last time we did the strategic plan, this was kind of the dominant features, right? The dominant things were, you know, finishing the K-8 campus and all that work's done now. So, it's kind of nice to have this on the back page, but there's still some loose ends to tie up. And that includes completing the facilities master plan, K-12. So, we do plan on trying to auction Dunbar this summer. We will finish the Phase 3 of the high school athletic complex over the next three years, which would include the new baseball stadium. And then we will also upgrade the, the old stadium over at the K-8 campus. Kirk has some, we have some high school, some of our technology that was, you know, put in when we built this school needs to be upgraded here at the high school. That'll be a priority over the next few years. And then, we still do a lot, we still use a lot of paper, both for student records, time cards, purchase orders, and we endeavor to move all of that to digital, at least most of it, to digital and electronic forms over the next few years. So those are the highlights. Again, I think it captures really well the themes that occurred from our stakeholders over the last two and a half months. And we're excited to get started and roll on. So I don't know if the board sees anything or concerns you might have, you might be missing, or... So if the board sees anything or concerns you might have, that might be missing, or any questions I can answer?
No, I think you captured, you know, and we had the session with Mr. Ferguson and I think you guys, and I know it's, that was one stakeholder, set of stakeholder input, but I know you guys did a pretty good job of interviewing students, you know, community members and such, so how about you all?
Well done. It's a good plan.
I thank you to Jeff Ferguson for putting the time into it. Thank you. I know the yeoman work you put into it, so thank you. So what's the next step for us on this, Steve?
So the next step, we will approve it in May.
In May, okay, gotcha.
So some work to fine tune that. As we discussed when we started this process with, you know, my position now, you know, my previous position, I should say, now empty, we are looking at staffing the central office and really using the strategic plan to help set the priorities and help us set that staffing. So that'll be a conversation with the board as well, recommendations on how we, how we staff the administration office and basically assign these tasks. This will, this will be something you'll, will be in front of us and really guide the work plans of the leadership of the district over the next three years. And so next steps, it'll happen pretty quick. We'll approve it in May. There will be some administrative recommendations to the board to support the strategic plan. And then we'll be, we'll be off and running.
Awesome. Thanks, Steve.
Good. Thank you.
Appreciate it. I don't, there's no, any, there's no old business. Section 7, section 8, any new business to come before the board? I haven't listed. Informational reports. Start with happy birthday, girl.
Nothing really. We worked a lot on the strategic plan and I think, you know, Stephen and Jeff did a fantastic job with it. We're already getting ready for next year. We have our first, our first job postings up for, for fourth happy finish there. Sorry, it's a bitter sweet. We're still working on the extended learning plan that should be coming out relatively soon, so we know how many teachers and students are going to be doing on that. And, you know, one of the goals that we had a couple of years ago when we hired Joe Coleman as our band is to build up our band program. And next year, we're going to have new band students, because we are starting band in fifth grade again, so we're going to have band fifth, sixth, and seventh, they're going to be all new. And we're up to 85 kids signing up for band fifth, sixth, seventh grade. So we're really excited about that. And Mr. Coleman's doing a really nice job pushing the band for that.
Thank you. All right.
Just two quick things on the COVID front. I'll refer the board to the dashboard. We're at 19 student cases this month, no staff. That is more in line with the December-January numbers and the February-March numbers. I'm not consistent with what we're seeing in the larger community, but still in a good place. I'll also mention and remind the board too that we, on April 14th and 15th, we did have African childrens, and again, along with our great work from Bath and our nursing center. And we did have 68 students receive vaccinations, their first doses, and then on May 5th and 6th, right before prom, we'll get their second dose and, you know, we're excited that we, you know, had the opportunity to provide something, you know, to give back to the community and the students, you know, especially here now for next year. So that's all I have tonight.
Great. Thank you. Kurt?
I just want to reiterate, we'll be collecting Chromebooks from seniors secondly from May. The rest of the students, K-11, will hold on to the Chromebooks, take them home this summer, we'll be sending them to the documentation about our expectations on keeping them secure and safe and undamaged and leaving them back in the fall. The Chromebooks of the seniors turn in, we'll be reconditioning, the best area repairing, getting ready to redeploy to the kindergartners studying preschool. So that's all I have.
Awesome. Thanks, Kurt. Okay, communications, I didn't see anyone new come in. So at this point, a motion to adjourn. Motion by Kurt, second by Mark. Sorry, I'm not getting going. Jeff, please call the roll.
Mr. Tyler.
Aye.
Mr. Ferrer.
Aye.
Mr. Justice Carter.
Aye.
Mr. Keller.
Aye.
Thank you.